All right, Chris, welcome to the show. How are you doing?
Yeah, good. Good morning. Doing great.
Morning. Good morning. Well, speaking of morning, we have to kick off this episode with a little bit of a unique twist on a question we always ask, and that's what's in your glass. But Chris, I know you're you're working on something over on your side. So you don't mind sharing what you're creating over on your end right now.
So what's in my mug is what's in my mug every morning, which is some flavor and format of our product, which is mud water. This is our OG mud. This is the OG cacao. This is the original blend that our CEO came up with five, six years ago now. And what I do is I make this with a little bit of honey and oat milk. You can also do it with maple syrup and oat milk. I like to froth up the milk in my little Nespresso frother. And what you're gonna do is you're just gonna take a tablespoon of the mud water. Heaping, if you like it. That's what it looks like. Beautiful. And then pour some hot water over it. And then froth it up and you're good to go. I like to put honey in it. Like I said, the cool thing about mud water, like you might not necessarily put honey in coffee. It might be a little funky or but mud pairs really well with that because it's actually chai based. So it's like a tea base cacao kind of situation. Now, how do you make your mud is my question to you?
Oh, gosh. So I have the the matcha on my side and I did it with your coconut creamer with MCT oil. So I did hot water. Put a little bit tablespoon of the matcha in there, frosted up. I used a hand frother. So I know you guys have one that I was able to use for that. And then I put some of the creamer in there and a little bit of your sugar as well that you guys have. So I have a completely mud cup besides the water. So I'm excited to try. This is my first time trying the matcha. I've tried the cacao, but I'm excited.
Yeah, the matcha is really, really high quality matcha. It's really nice. If you want a little more of a kick, the matcha is great. I'm putting in raw honey. Dankest of the dank.
Delicious.
And and yes, our frother, how have you found it to be working with the frother? It's a pretty intense role.
It is. It is. And I love the design. I've tried many frothers in the past personally and your guys, not only does it look cool, but it works very well, a lot more high speed than ones I've tried before. So I'm a huge fan just because I like a nice, smooth, frothy blend. So I'm a I'm a huge fan there. Erica, what do you have right now?
I am actually right along there with Chris. I've got the cacao blend, the rise cacao blend, and I have it with a little bit of maple syrup and it tastes really, really good. I have been sipping on that pretty much all morning throughout some meetings today. So been loving that.
What I love about the ingredients in this in mud waters, like it just really pairs well with lots of different stuff. So iced mud is awesome. It's really good in cakes and baking and stuff like that. It's really good in mole. You know, anything you might put cacao in. It can be really good in. So it's a very versatile. Yeah, very versatile subject, the mud.
Oh, that is so cool. And we could talk to you about beverages all day long and all of the things in our glasses and our cups right now. But we do want to jump into a little bit more of the career and marketing conversation here. So let's talk quickly through your career experience thus far. You know, how did you get to where you are today?
Sure. Yeah, well, I was one of these kids who is always running around with a video camera in my hand. And I'm old enough, I'll date myself, that YouTube was nowhere to be found when I was coming of age and making tons of videos. So I had nowhere to put them, unfortunately. But I was making YouTube videos before YouTube videos were a thing. And then and then that took me into filmmaking. So I I worked in Hollywood. I worked in all different departments of film. I worked at National Geographic doing nonfiction television and Discovery Channel and did a bunch of different kinds of film video making through the years. Ended up making some series, some nonfiction series and did one on dance, went around the world for Netflix called We Speak Dance. So I had a really fun career in film video. And never thought it would take me to a brand to working on the brand side per se. But the all of our creatives will know that one of the things that gets kind of tiring is always looking for your next job, right? It's like you're you're hustling all the time when you're freelance and you know, I even had a production company, but we were still hunting for our next clients all the time. So I I had this inkling that what if I worked on the brand side? What if I could be sort of an executive producer on the brand side so that I had, I knew where my paycheck was coming from, but really devote myself to a brand that I felt I cared about. And it turns out that was a good hunch, like it. It's been really, really cool to make that switch from freelancing to working within a brand. And I actually came about mud water because I'm a breathwork guide and Shane, our founder, would come into my breathwork classes in Santa Monica. And he loved the experience of breathwork and sure enough, we had a respiratory global pandemic hit. I don't know if you remember sometime around 2020. And that became it became really apparent that that sharing breathwork was really important. And Shane felt that way too. And mud water was just, you know, I think at the time they had, we had about 60,000 followers on our Instagram and Shane said, let's let's offer this as a gift to our community. Because he cares deeply about healthy habits and people. You know, having access to those. So he said, well, you come on our channel and guide breathwork. And I said, yeah, sure, I'll do that. And we started doing that. And sure enough, I started learning about the company and how important it is for a brand these days to have a creative team. And how that can really power you up in such a major way. So he brought me on as a head of head of film was my first title at Mudwater. And I got to sort of merge my my love. So I'm still a resident breathwork guide. I still guide breathwork on all of our meetings. I do it externally on on our Instagram channel and and now we have a new space on guiding breathwork in our space. And and also while becoming our creative director, my my title has evolved, my job has evolved. So now I take on performance, marketing, design and copywriting.
Incredible. And what a journey to, you know, going from freelance to being brought on to a team to do a specific task to then being brought on to, you know, this uh, you know, larger scope of a role. I would just love to hear a little bit more about your role as creative director at Mudwater and how you approach creative direction for the brand.
Yeah, sure. Well, I mean, the first thing to know about our brand that's unique is it was begun by a creative person. Like Shane is just such an endemically creative guy. He ran design teams for a long time in in the tech world. And he he really created the brand of his own voice of his own passion. And to the degree where he like coded the web so website in one frantic night of creativity, he just had a vision for mud water. And two days later, he was selling it on online as a fully formed kind of idea. He had already conceived of this beautiful tin. He had done the design. So a lot of the the creative groundwork was laid super early by Shane. He has a very unique voice, kind of an edgy voice. And so all that I I kind of came up in the tradition of Shane's voice at the company. And and it's such a good voice. It's such an edgy voice, but it's also, you know, very human. And so first and foremost is I I've grown into that. I've learned that voice. I've evolved that voice in my own way through video and film. But but I I want to honor that in stepping into this creative director role. And so it's really fun. I get to collaborate with the CEO on how to bring the voice to all the departments and that. So that's a big part of my job. Performance marketing is a huge part of my job since we are mostly DTC brand, although we're, you know, we're expanding into other channels, but a lot of mud water success so far has been subscription model. We're selling to people online. So people's point of contact with the brand is often through our ads. And and we want to make those valuable, you know, we we definitely want to sell mud water and get it out there. But at the same time, you know, there's an imperative to to make stuff that we don't feel as icky, to make stuff that we feel like is helpful, to lead people towards something that we feel like will benefit their lives. And so so that's kind of my my the ethos which which I approached the job. Technically, what I'm doing is I'm managing that team that's our internal creative team that's working on the performance marketing. Our design team that's doing a lot of, you know, our landing page iterations and 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 also helping with our statics for performance marketing. Obviously optimizing our our digital products. And then copywriting, which from the beginning has been a big part of mud's edge, you know, we 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 came right out of the gate with with a mug that said F your coffee in no uncertain words, because it had an edge and our idea, our idea was, you know, Shane's idea was really to to make people question their relationship to to habits that they might not think about. And so copywriting is a is a big part of of mud water and and that's that's come under my scope. Now, as creative director, I have more talented people than me in each of those pockets that I get to, you know, work with. But so it's really cool, especially for me coming from film to now lean into design and copywriting, which are relatively new capacities for me. And and it's been super fun.
That's awesome. Well, and I'm excited to ask you about the storytelling and how your past in film production is being infused through some of the assets that you're developing. But first, you mentioned your in-house creative team that's working on developing those performance marketing ads. So you all made this transition from relying on external agencies to bringing more of that creative work in-house. I know nowadays, a lot of brands are doing the opposite. They're farming out some of that work. And so what was that transition like for you guys? And how has that been beneficial just to have more of a taps on what's being developed and creative and created internally?
Yeah. So I mean, you said it. It's 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 certainly a question that a lot of brands are asking and and we're kind of, I must say, we were kind of building the ship as we were sailing it here. So we we were figuring it out as we as we went and and still are very much so. But one thing that we we did know is we're spending a ton of money on agencies. And some of what we were getting back felt very canned, felt very formulaic. It felt like there was people being paid to say that they liked our product. And that just didn't feel like one of our values is being deeply human. We we honestly believe that it's a good product. We honestly have, we have enough stories of people that actually love it and actually benefit from it that we shouldn't have to fudge it. And so we kind of had this this hunch that this is really just a process issue. There's there's agencies that have figured out the process of making this stuff at scale. And if we can mirror that, if we can figure out how they do it and bring that internal, it should be, it should be efficient to hire a small kind of elite team to do what agencies are doing with, you know, bigger teams and a lot of overhead and and big, you know, warehouses. So that's what we've done. And we've had great success in the in the past, particularly in the past year with that and and kind of figuring out our own formula and our own approach. And that said, this game is always changing, you know. So so now we're particularly with with AI, there's incredible tools coming online for remixing your performance ads, for finding hooks that work for, you know, the structuring ads, for using your current libraries to reformat your libraries and and look for winning winning content in there. And as anybody who makes anything video will know, it's it's hard to capture and a lot of assets. It's hard to edit these things. So they're very, it's very valuable when you have a library. So so making the most of your library is is really important as well. So all that is to say, we're always open to new tools. We're always open to working with, you know, if there are, we do have some agencies in our sphere that are awesome for us, but we try to rely on them with with a light touch.
Yeah, I think having a team internally who knows the brand to that deep level is so beneficial for just pulling out those stories, you know, outside perspective is also beneficial for certain things as well. But if you can make it work internally, I think that's amazing. And, you know, just kudos to you guys for not having this mindset of this is the way we've always done things and, you know, not wanting to innovate and change. And so I think that's huge of just always looking to optimize and grow if needed. But like I said earlier, I do want to talk about storytelling here for a minute. So as a filmmaker, how does your background in visual storytelling influence your approach to design and content creation for mud water?
Well, it's funny, I came straight out of the gate when we came into mud water, Shane Shane and I were both really excited by what you know, folks like Yeti Coolers were doing and Red Bull Media House and Patagonia Films and and these brand films that really that we fell in love with. You know, when you say I love, I love Patagonia, I mean, people love that brand regardless of the clothes. They love the brand. They love what it stands for. And and we, I think that has a lot to do with the the signal they're sending, right? So they're always sending this heartbeat of we care about the environment. We care about Mother Earth. That's that's our signal. We're gonna send that no matter what. And Shane and I were very passionate about sending our signal, which is healthy minds through healthy habits. Like if you if you act in the world with healthy habits every day, and if you have, you know, certain things that you know are beneficial to you, your mind will become healthy. That's kind of a one-to-one relationship, healthy minds, healthy habits. And how do we send that message out at the highest level? And so we started making films and and we we created what's called Mud Films and there's a whole suite of films that we've made. We started with a guy named Koa Smith, an amazing surfer who had a traumatic brain injury and helped to heal from that with with amongst other things psychedelics and 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 a kind of non-traditional path to healing. But we saw him as a symbol for that, that taking control over his habits as a way of healing his mind. And that was like a perfect story for us. So so we led with that. We made a bunch of films and you can watch these on YouTube and 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 at Mud Films. And and those were awesome. And people kept saying like, I love mud water. And and I I know when people say that, I hear that a lot. People say, I love mud water. Have you tried it? Maybe not. Maybe they haven't even tried it, but they love it. And I think it's a bit of that effect of of brand of like, we're we're trying to send the signal about what we care about and people can relate to that. So that high level storytelling, to answer your question, is, I think, the best the best way to do that is to continue that heartbeat of like, here's what we care about as a brand. We're putting it in films. We're trying to cram it into performance ads. Doesn't always work. You know, performance ads are kind of their own animal. Sometimes you just have to talk about the product for 30 seconds and that's great. But any chance we get these these touch points of like, how can we tell a larger brand story here? So we we started doing, you know, with mud films and and that's evolved and and we've done we've done some longer format ads, like we did a founder story ad, I think, which is a great example of of advertorial storytelling. I mean, there's really is, there's, you know, problem, solution, benefits. There's like the full any of those who, any people who make, you know, the ads out there may may be familiar with those formats of like, you start with a hook and then you introduce the problem and then you get in. So all that stuff that that founder story is like by the book. You know, a selling formula, but it's also a really good story of a founder and it's very authentic and true. And that's been seen, you know, 10 million plus times because it's converted for us as an as an ad. So the magic, you know, for for anyone who who does my job, I think, is finding ways to to live in both brand and performance, right? So and to to merge those where you can and to and to leave them alone. Like sometimes we're just making a story that that we care about and we're not trying to sell mud. And sometimes we're really trying to sell mud and, you know, sometimes we're doing both. And hopefully most of the time we're doing both.
No, that's awesome. And I love that you speak to the power of brand and just the power of consumers seeing your content, whether it's an ad or, you know, your social content or just whatever's out there online and kind of generating that brand love, even if they haven't tried it because they love the content that you're sharing and the creative assets that you're putting out there and they really resonate with the story in there. I think that's so important. I want to transition a little bit because we love talking about wellness habits and things like that on the on the show just to, you know, add an an extra element to somebody's career journey. You mentioned that you lead breathwork sessions for the mud water community, your team. How do you see the impact of breathwork and mindfulness practices like that in your professional life and others' professional lives? And how do they contribute kind of to your creative process as a whole?
Well, that's an awesome question. First of all, it's just, it's so exciting to see, you know, over the past five years to see how many brands have taken on wellness as an important, you know, part of their offerings for their employees internally, all that. I, you know, the quality of your breath is the quality of your, again, that signal that you're putting out into the world. It's your quality of presence. So I I'm going to geek out about this for a second, but you can't both be breathing. You can't both be conscious, aware of your breath and thinking at the same time. So that's the beautiful thing about focusing on your breath. When you're present with your breath, you're present, you're here, your head's not somewhere else. You're right here inside with the wellspring of life that is your breath and your sustaining force. So all that sounds pretty heady, but in practicality, what that means is we have so much noise in our in our lives. We all know this. And how, what is the doing of mindfulness? What is the doing of getting present? You hear that a lot, but how do you do that? And the doing of it, the action of it, the thing that all of our high achievers can do is breathwork is is be with your breath, because then you're doing the thing where you're getting present. So it's it's really cool that way. And I actually like that it's called breathwork for that very reason because you know, it is something that you have to put effort into and that you have to lean into. Like mindfulness can be very soft and lovely and I and I appreciate that too. But there's something about like you dedicate yourself to your breath for a little while and you're going to change the quality of your day. You're going to change the quality of your relationships to the people in the office around you if you take those moments for yourself. And, you know, when when we we gather as a as a team at mud water, the first thing we'll do is a breathwork exercise. You guys want to do one real quick? Let's do, let's do.
Let's do it.
Okay. So here, here, this is so simple, right? This is called an 11 11 breath. We're just going to take 11 breaths. We're gonna hold on the 11th one. We're gonna hold for 11 seconds. You might get a little lightheaded. You'll just feel what that feels like. But that's all we're gonna do. Okay? So just close your eyes and just notice how you feel now. Notice what's going on in your body. Those at home can do this too. Just close your eyes with us. Just notice any quality in your body unless you're driving, then just keep your eyes open. What's the quality of breath? Is there any anxious quality in your breath? Or is it nice and calm and easy? Not trying to change anything, just noticing. And then we're going to take 11 big breaths. We're going to breathe in through our nose, if you have access to that. If not, your mouth is fine. And we're gonna exhale through our mouth. So big, deep inhale through your nose. And then just let it go. Keep that going. Keep breathing, big inhale, exhale. Here's five. Focusing on that big full breath coming in and releasing just a few more. Three more. Okay, last one. Big full inhale and hold at the top. So holding here full just for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. And now exhale with this sound. Keep your eyes closed just for another moment. And just notice how you feel. Notice any sensations in your body, any changes. Notice your breath takes over again, nice, easy breath. That your natural breath catches you and takes over. You don't even have to think about it. And when you're ready, just blinking your eyes open.
Wow, that was awesome.
Feel instantly calm and just reset. That was so nice. I see how that's really beneficial before meetings, just to set intentions, clear your mind, go into a meeting, clear-headed.
Yeah. And you know, it's 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 so versatile as well, right? So if you're feeling like if you're feeling low energy and you want to pick up your energy, you might want to focus on inhaling and speeding up your inhales or speeding up your breath. So you could do faster. Maybe you could just pant for two seconds. You'll find yourself a little more energy. If you want to down regulate, if you want to calm yourself, focus on breathing through your nose, slowing down your exhales. Really simple stuff, but it can, it can kind of change the quality of again, of your day and then change the quality of your life.
Amazing. We're so excited to join some of those virtual sessions you have. How often are those held by you guys?
I've been doing them every other Friday for going on three and a half years now. Yeah, we just kind of kept it going after COVID, but I couldn't find a reason to stop. So we still do a breathwork session every other Friday. And it's on our IG live at Drink Mud Water.
Perfect. Well, we'll have information on that in the show notes. But Chris, kind of staying on a similar career path here for a minute. Just curious what advice you have for other creative professionals looking to advance their careers in the digital marketing space, particularly in graphic design and performance marketing?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's it's funny to be in a position to give advice. Like five years ago, I didn't know what performance marketing was, you know? And but I think that's, I think that's my my advice has to do with that. I five years ago, hell, three years ago, I didn't know what performance marketing was and I was working at Mudwater. So truthfully, I think it's somebody who's creative and drawn to put their voice into the world is going to have things that 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 they got to get out, right? That they're just like motivated to to speak into the world. And be that in a design venue or video or copyrighting or whatever. And if you keep putting that signal into the world, it will get it'll get messed with by the world and and it will get asked for by certain places and you will eventually find yourself in the position where that signal is really welcome and really needed. And you know, that was my journey is I just kept doing. I just kept making. I just kept listening to the the voices in my head. And eventually I found a place that really could benefit from what I had to offer. So that's kind of like the general Rick Rubin creative, you know, I I I fully subscribe to this, like, you know, just keep doing you and and tuning out the noise and really making time to to do the work that you feel is good. I still do that at mud water. I mean, today, the rest of the day, I'm going to be, I'm turning off Slack and I'm going to be working on a script. And it's something that I just have a hunch is gonna work. And, you know, the the other thing is it's always, it's always evolving, always changing. You can get a good job in performance marketing by paying attention to what the trends are and doing exactly that. You know, there's, there's no question that there's a science to this that's evolving. And if you're reading the blogs and, you know, on LinkedIn and learning as much as you can about performance marketing, you will, you will learn the formulas that that make you successful. They're out there. This is like that it's, I love performance because it is really like science meets art, you know, there's there, you're getting a lot of feedback, you're getting a lot of data and you're using that to to create from. And if you want to do the next, the next wonderful thing, it's probably not going to be in that formula. It's gonna be something a little different. It's be something a little new. So there's always room for pioneers, even in, even in, you know, spaces that can be thought of as as kind of nerdy as performance marketing. I'm having a blast. I mean, I'm I'm somebody who came from like a film and as creative as as could be. And I I'm having so much fun like hacking this, these little performance formulas, like what will suck? And you get immediate feedback. So that's really, you know, it's really fun. It's like, that worked, that didn't work, that resonated. I don't know why. Why did that resonate? Ah, I'm mad that that resonated. That's not even like, that wasn't my favorite version. I actually kind of hated that version, but people are buying that people are listening. I gotta listen to people. So I don't even know if I'm answering your question, but that that feels like how I approached this whole thing.
Oh, that's that's so good. And I'm reading right now. I love hearing you talk about your job and how much fun you're having because I'm reading a book called Feel Good Product. Oh, that's, that's so good. And I'm reading right now. I love hearing you talk about your job and how much fun you're having because I'm reading a book called, uh, Feel Good Productivity right now. And it's all about that, you know, having that element of play in your everyday. How can you make something fun and, you know, not get burnt out? You know, doing a job that you're doing. So, uh, it just made me think of that. And I think that's really awesome. You've mentioned it a little bit, but I just want to know if there's anything else that you kind of wish you knew uh, earlier on in your career. That's a question we always love to ask our guests.
Yeah. I, I, I mean, it's all about, I wish I had trusted that voice more, 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 more. You know, as I, my, my particular journey, it's, it's easy to see where the, the, the miss was. And I, I don't want to, I, there's no regrets, but if I had taken the signal that I was putting out onto YouTube when I was 23, when YouTube was just coming online, like that would, it'd be interesting to just, you know, see how that future would have played out. Because I was already kind of living this YouTube creator life. I just didn't know about YouTube. So the, the, the important part of that story is like, I, I was doing it. I was just making stuff. I was listening to myself. Nobody was seeing it, but it didn't matter because that, that all prepared me to do everything that I went on to do. And, and again, I, I made a signal that people eventually heard. Kind of an interesting way it took place for me. It was like, I, I was also into acting and stuff like that. And, and a, all these actors were like showing up at auditions, wanting an acting job. I was just kind of making friends with people and, and putting myself in my own videos. And then people would cast me because they saw me in videos. So it was like, make, make your own luck in a way, you know, put yourself in the thing. If you want to do performance marketing, make some ads for companies that you want to work with. Like follow the formula, just start making stuff, start sending it to people like me. If you make a good ad, like I'll program it. That'd be awesome. Anybody wants to make a Mudwater ad, go for it. Like, I'm not gonna, I will look at it, you know? If it's great, we'll run it. If, if it feels authentic and feels you. So I, I think, I think making your own luck is a big one. I think like that just believe in yourself to an unreasonable degree. You know, like it's not reasonable. It's just, you just gotta do it. You just gotta believe that you can kind of, that your voice matters, that your voice is welcome, that we need you to, to be your creative damn self.
Oh, Chris, this has been awesome. Thank you for such a inspiring, motivating, relaxing conversation. Uh, we really appreciate it. We're excited to take everything we learned from the wellness side, the career, the marketing side, and just implement it in our day to day. But we'd love to stay in touch with you and everything going on at Mudwater. We're excited to see some of the ads and things that you guys are working on. But where can we do that online? What's the best place to stay in touch with you personally and the brand?
Well, you can find me at the Chris Keener. That's me. At Drink Mudwater. That's where we live on Instagram. Check out our YouTube channel. We got a lot of great stuff on there. You'll see the Mudfilms, a lot of the fun work. We've done a lot of the funny, crazy stuff. And if you're in Los Angeles, have to mention that we opened our first cafe. It's called Gather. And we're really aiming to recreate what it means to be, to wander into a cafe. You know, it's an, it's a vibey spot. There's, it's, we don't kick you out. We don't side eye you for staying too long. We got great wifi and plugs and we welcome people to come and actually engage, actually meet each other. Because one of the healthiest habits is community, is engaging in community. So we're aiming to build physical, real life community. So hopefully in a few years, we'll have a gather in your city, wherever you are, all of your audience. And, um, yeah, and, and keep doing what you're doing because I, you know, the other answer to that question is investigate, is ask questions. You know, I think everybody who's young and who's wants to, and hungry and wants to learn, like your, your podcast is an amazing example of you, you women are leveling up with every guest that you have on. And, and I think it's brilliant of you. So well done.
Thank you so much. So fine. Yeah, we're excited to stay in touch, uh, on everything you have going on. And we will certainly make a trip out to LA so we can experience that. Cause that sounds amazing. Well, Chris, thank you so much again for joining us today and just sharing everything you're working on. We can't wait to, uh, just stay in touch. Like I said, check in here in a little bit on the podcast again and see what has changed since we last spoke.
Sounds great. Thank you. Cheers to you.